Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Special Public Meeting. The Board met tonight in private executive session on May 2 at 6:00 PM. The purpose of this session was to discuss personnel, negotiations, and legal matters. This meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. The public hearing, Special Public Meeting, tonight, you get two for the price of one. We have two meetings tonight, is happening tonight, May 2 at approximately 7:07 PM here at the Harrison Conference Room and is also via live stream. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live right now. All community questions and comments will be welcomed in person here at the Harrison School Conference Room. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Budget Hearing, which is happening now, Special Public Meeting, is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, and the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and tap into West Essex, at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and the Township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, would you please take the role?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Here.
Mr. Elko? Ms. Getty?
Here.
Ms. Grasso?
Here.
Mr. Cipuletti? So three members present, two members absent. We do have a quorum.
Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we need a motion to open the public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
And I'll second.
Brian, will you take the role, please?
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those against, nay? Abstentions, 3-0, motion carried.
Okay, now we're going to have a presentation of the 2022-2023 budget by our Business Administrator, Mr. Brian McCarthy.
All right. Again, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Brian McCarthy, the School Positions Administrator and Board Secretary. And I'm going to take about 10 minutes to go through 2023 school budget, fiscal year '23, and then after we get done, we'll have time for questions. Okay, here we go. I put this on in every budget. My family says, you know, you speak a lot about the budget, I write to my kids, and so really, what is a budget? It's really nothing other than a plan of our expenses and our revenues expressed in monetary terms. The budget will satisfy the mission of superintendent and the board, and again, it's expressed in, you'll see the different ways we allocate the resources in our budget.
So where does the money come from? This slide here is really just a highlights of the revenue from the budget this year. Our total budget is about $60 million. Our operating budget, which is generally what is raised through our tax levy, is $55 million. This year, we received, will be up $958,000 through the tax levy rise of 2%. That's the most we're allowed to raise the tax levy each year. We also are beneficiary of an increase in state aid through the School Fund Reform Act. We received $477,000 additional funds. It's over a five-year period. There's two more years left on this act, so next few years, we'll have an increase in state aid as well. Inside our revenue this year, we have a one-time increase of state aid, excuse me, of excess surplus. It's $1,133 this year. This is money that is left over from our fiscal year '20 budget that we're allowed to use in our budget. It's not something we want to use for reoccurring revenue, but we'll use it for capital projects, which you'll see later. We also have reserve withdrawals from some of our restricted reserves funds. I call them extra buckets. So when we have money left over at the end of a fiscal year, we have the ability, some to put in the budget, or we can put it into a separate fund or account for capital reserve projects or maintenance reserve projects. So in our revenue this year, we have a withdrawal of $1,405 from our capital reserve fund, and then we're going to have a withdrawal of $418,000 from our maintenance reserve funds, and they're going to be used for projects, which you'll see in a little bit. The other two funds here I wanted to highlight, our Fund '20 is called Special Revenue Fund. The budget this year is $2.4 million, approximately. A large amount of that is from the American Rescue Plan. It's called ARP, is the acronym. It's the third tranche of the COVID funding, and that's part of it. We also have budgeted money from IDA and Title I Funds, and now it's called ESEA, changes every year, but that's our Title I Funds. And finally, we have $2.7 million. It's called Fund '40, it's our debt service fund. So we do have some debt, and we put that in our budget to pay off our long-term debt. So the total budget here is $60 million and change. Some of the highlights, what's happening this year in our budget. In curriculum, we're going to add a PE teacher at the elementary level. We're going to add four teachers, special education resource teachers at the elementary level. We're going to put, through our ARP SIR grant, we're going to add a math supervisor. The other things that we're expensing that is highlighted here is that our insurance is up roughly 10% for our property and casualty. That's the insurance that maintains the liability in our buildings, and also our health benefits, a large part of our budget here, up 8%. That's in our budget. We also have salaries. You'll see that's a large part of our expense here, up roughly 3.3% for the teachers, secretaries 3%, and the administration will be up, you know, comparable in this budget as well. We're going to be spending some money on technology. We have 500 laptops, 400 Chromebooks that we're going to be paying off, that's in our budget, $263,000. We're going to buy some additional Chromebooks this year. We're planning on, you know, do, print this out here. We have, we're hoping to upgrade the wireless technology throughout the district, and also a cell signal booster. We have some low spots in Caldwell, and we're hoping this technology is going to improve cell signals and wireless as well. Other things we're going to do, some of the things I talked about coming out of those buckets, we have $950,000 we're going to spend through that ARP SIR grant. The building you're in right now is going to be reconfigured to add classrooms, to have additional classroom space to alleviate any shortages in the district. We're also going to reconfigure the admin offices at the same time here in the building. We're going to create a security desk room for your capital reserve fund in this building. Do you want to turn that over, please? We're hoping to spend $800,000 from the capital reserve fund to overhaul and upgrade, hopefully something comparable to the performing arts. Oh, wow. Better. The gym floor, we're going to replace the gym floor, capital reserves, excuse me, major reserves at the high school. We're going to improve the dust collection system, and finally, we're going to, we have money budgeted to fix the playground pavement at Jefferson. This slide here is self-explanatory. We're staffing here. You'll look and you'll see that we have a number of 185 regular education teachers in the budget. We have specialized education teachers, aides. The bulk of our staffing here would be about 426 FTEs, equivalent through these different Revenue, so where does the money come from? Last year, our budget was, at the bottom there, say, $51 million. This year, it's about $4 million higher. Inside this budget, the ones on the state difference, these are the one-time things I just spoke about. You have excess surplus, which is a one-off we use for capital projects. We have the withdrawals from our reserve accounts. We also have an increase in the tax levy. So those yellow figures here are under 2%. As you can see that, everything highlighted in green, 93% of our revenue comes from the tax levy, which is what we ask the towns to contribute, West Caldwell and Caldwell, and the state aid. So all these other items, we do have, you know, fees we collect from transporting students. We do have some interest income, but this is like many school districts, your tax levy and your aid from the state represent, you know, the lion's share of where the money comes from. We're in a good shape here in the sense that we have most of our aid coming in the form of the tax levy, so we're able to control or plan better than had we been upside down where most of the money's coming from the state. And some districts are like that, but fortunately, we're not. Expenditures, so of the $55 million, you can see all the things that we do here. Constructional expenditures, special education instruction. What's interesting here, if you look at the instruction for regular education programs, for special education, for tuition, operations, and employee benefits, 71% of our budget. So if you look at all the different things we do, which we're going to continue to do all those good things, 71% come from just these four areas, one, two, three, four, five The same chart, if I take them and actually look by category, of those different programs, we have 57% of our funds are expensed for salaries. Another 16% for health benefits, property liability, and debt service. So of our budget, $55 million, 80% are just for these four areas. Our Fund '20 budget I told you about, here's where the money's going next year. We have the Title I money, which is the ESEA money. It's used for, you can see, structural support, structural supplies, and curriculum support. We have the IDA preschool, basic, that's really, IDA is a federal grant, Individual Disability Education Act. We use that for out-of-district tuition. And then I told you about, we have this money come from the ARP SIR, and it shows you there, most of it was going to be going to, large portion is going to be going for the construction here, as well as these other structural support next year. Tax impact, what most people care about. If you look on the top here, we're going to raise taxes by 2%. If you look at our debt service, our debt service is actually going down. So we're less than last year, so the total of our budget is actually 1.86% increase over last year. And the tax levy is going to be for West Caldwell, $32,801,000, and then $16,64,000 for Caldwell. Over the last 12 years, you can look at what the change has been as far as the tax increase in the town. So we're in a good shape this year. We have a 2% increase, which is the lowest increase in almost 10 years. If you look on the right side there, the change, the last time we were this low as far as a year-over-year increase was in 2013, 2014, the FY '14 school year. So we're doing all of these things here, and taxes are going to be going up minimally. These are estimated tax rate with the debt service. So last year, now again, they're estimated, this is what's in our, in the software that state puts out. It's what we do know, which is completely accurate, is the split between the communities from West Caldwell and Caldwell, because we have received updated equalization tables from the county. So based on those, that data, we're going to have an increase of .688 for Caldwell and .0182 for West Caldwell. And for each assessed value, in Caldwell, your tax will approach approximately $69. So that's per $100,000. So a $400,000 house is going to be roughly $280 higher. Same thing for West Caldwell, it's about $20, you know, $20. We're going to go up for $400,000 average assessed house, you're going to be up about $80. Again, lower rates, lowest increase since 2014. Tomorrow, maybe actually tonight, our user-friendly budget, which has a lot more detail, which we require to post on our website, will be available to view. Thank you. Any questions?
Liz, give me one minute, I'll read it, and then I'll let you. Okay, so now we'll take questions on the presentation. I just want to also take a minute to thank Mr. McCarthy, that was wonderful, Brian, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So anyone who has a question is going to be welcome to come up. Let me just read the rules before we do it. Public participation shall be governed by the following. The participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration and may only address items on the agenda. So for this particular meeting, the questions tonight can only address the budget, okay, until we move into the next meeting. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Does anyone have any questions about the budget presentation? Please come up. Hi, Liz Hart, 149 Ravine Avenue. I was trying to take notes as quickly as possible while you were going through, so please bear with me if some of my comments are slightly off.
Sure.
So you mentioned how we were taking from the capital and the maintenance reserve funds?
Yes.
So is there a minimum budget that we are required to have within those reserve buckets, or are we allowed to reduce them to zero?
So this year, we're taking, we're still going to have approximately $4.5 million in capital reserve, because I'm expecting to have another deposit at the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So there's no minimum that we have to keep in there.
Okay.
The rules for the capital reserve are really governed by that you have projects that are earmarked in your long-range facility plan. So you can't actually have that reserve increase with no plans filed at the state to where you're going to spend it.
Okay, okay, got it. You also mentioned how there is an increase of 10% for property liability and 8% for health. Is that normal, or is that a larger increase than what we've seen in the past?
Let me answer those questions. Okay, so I would say that those are normal.
Okay.
One of the things that's gone higher for the property, casualty, and liability is our cyber insurance. Believe it or not, it's become a larger issue within that type of insurance. So rates are going higher as far as, so that's for the property and casualty, so 10% is conservative. It could go lower. Some of that is also our workers' comp, so we put that in there, because it's been pretty good, but that can go higher as well.
Okay.
So that's the 10%, and that's a smaller portion of our insurance, about $900,000 for the fees. Our health insurance, 8% is, it's probably conservative. We're hoping it's going to be lower, but if you look at health insurance, the rise in health insurance premiums over the last decade or more, there have been times where there have been double-digit increases in health insurance premiums.
Okay.
So to be conservative, we put 8 in there, you know, I'm hoping it's going to come in lower, but it's conservative, because again, if it's over, then we're, you know, we don't have the money to pay for it, so we'd rather keep it in the budget.
Right, okay, understood. Am I allowed to keep going on that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So there was another slide about staffing where it said the FTE was 1.0, so I'm assuming that means that there's an increase in staff. Is that the math supervisor increase or additional head count?
So the slide I had with the FTE, they're not in there right now, that person. It was 426 is showing how we're broken out by staffing. That one, that person was not in that slide.
Okay, so the 1.0, the additional one full-time employee, that's...
That is not in that number. So I had 426 broken out, 426 and a half, actually.
Oh, okay.
That one other hire is not reflected in that number.
We're hiring four additional special education teachers.
Okay.
We're hiring an additional PE teacher in the elementary school, so that means each elementary school will have their own dedicated PE teacher.
Oh, great.
And we are looking at the, we're still continuing to look at the math supervisor. There hasn't been a final decision made about how we're going to do that yet.
Okay, understood. Because I was wondering if the FTE, that additional 1.0 person, and whether the numbers listed on that slide, does that take into account resignations and/or retirements or...
No.
No, okay.
That's just the total number of teacher positions we have in the budget right now.
Okay, and then my last question, I'm sorry. So the last question is, I also saw in the salaries for the teachers that that comprised 57%. Is that the, is that also in line with years in the past, or has that increased, decreased?
I don't have that statistic in front of me, but I will tell you that for many school districts, salaries and the benefits together are somewhere around 65, 67%. So we're close.
Okay.
As far as proportion of the budget, I would say it's probably very similar to other years.
Okay. Comparison for Caldwell West Caldwell, not necessarily to other districts.
If you just send me or Mr. McCarthy an email, we'll give you the exact numbers.
I can get that for you if you'd like.
It's easy to look back on last year's budget.
Okay, perfect. I was just honestly coming from the noneducational field, right, where it's like the great resignation and blah, 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 and even myself, knowing that salaries are very competitive in this day and age, that if 57% of the salaries are going towards the teachers, and if what you just said is we're a little bit on the lower side, maybe, you know, maybe we might want to try to go a little higher. So, yeah. So, that's it.
I wish it was that simple.
I know, I was just saying, but, you know, we want to stay competitive and keep these great teachers in our district, so that's it.
Right, but just remember that our tax levy can only go up by 2%.
Okay.
So we're kind of, you know, we're constrained by the revenue, 2%, and then our expenses are going, you know, we just showed 3%, 3.4%, 8%, 10% on the expense side. So you can look at the math and it's, you know, things have to give somewhere, so it's hard. We're cognizant of that, but it's hard when you're capped on revenue and you're not capped on expenses.
No, I hear you. I mean, and I'll just make one last really quick comment, just like with the Chromebook one-to-one, which I think was great, and I don't know if there was like an email or something that had been distributed to parents, but it just so happened that my son's laptop died a month before school started, and so I went and bought him a Chromebook, and now we have a home Chromebook, and then we have a school Chromebook, and I can't imagine that I'm the only parent within the entire district where there's, you know, one of the same. So that could even potentially be an option where we could save money for families that are able to, you know, already provide for this.
I think the person in charge of technology were not happy with that. They have a lot of security on all of our Chromebooks, so we try to keep them off our note, you know.
Absolutely. He charges his, we get those notes from Mr. Rattolo every week, and I'm like, you better make sure yours is charged, and so you don't get in trouble, but I honestly feel like, oh, I felt bad, like I spent this money, and then, you know, meanwhile, we could have even saved, honestly, the town is really what I meant to say, if I hadn't provided us with less stuff. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Liz, thank you. Anyone else have any questions on the budget presentation? One, two?
I just wanted to say one thing, I think it gleaned over really fast. We are going to be renovating the middle school auditorium. We've set aside several hundred thousand dollars to renovate it from top to bottom, so we are excited about doing that for the middle school.
Yes, much needed, very much needed. That'll be great for them. Any other questions or comments before we close out this meeting? Okay, so now may I have a motion to close this public budget hearing?
I make a motion to close the public meeting.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Brian, can you take the role?
All in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Okay, so now we are going to move into the public conference meeting. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live.
We're going to vote on this first.
Oh, we have to vote? Oh, sorry, Brian, I'm sorry.
A motion to vote on. No, 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 no.
Good, so what do I have to do?
So motion to...
I make a, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ma.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one on this evening's agenda under Finance.
And I will second it.
Thank you. Brian, can you take the role?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
3-0, motion carried.
Brian, do I have to reclose now?
Now we're going to, we're going to...
Can I just move into the next meeting?
We're just going to close this meeting here.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay.
Okay, all ayes?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay, now we're going to move into the next meeting. The Board of Education meeting will now be streamed live. All questions and comments are welcomed in person here at the Harrison School Conference Room. This meeting is starting at approximately 7:34 PM. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress, Caldwell, New Jersey, and the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey, and have been delivered to both the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and the Township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you once again take the role?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Here.
Mr. Elko? Ms. Getty?
Here.
Ms. Grasso?
Here.
Mr. Cipuletti? So three members present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Brian, do we have any communications?
None.
Okay, thank you. And now Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ryan Lavelle, I think he had to go.
Yes.
And then, sorry, Ryan, he was from Courage, 8th grade. So Jacob Whirling is from Respect, and he is going to do the presentation for the middle school. And I'm sure he's going to go back and tell all his friends tomorrow that didn't see the board meeting that we're renovating the auditorium.
Good evening, Dr. Calkin and Board members. Hi, my name is Jacob Whirling, and I am one of the House Leaders for the House of Respect. Tonight, I will be discussing what has been happening around our school and recent House activities. To start, on Thursday, we had a Project Unify event. Project Unify brings youth with and without intellectual disabilities together through education, sports, and related initiatives that promote acceptance, respect, and human dignity for all students. The House Leaders hosted it after school, and kids came in and played games. Some of the games we played were Hangman, Heads Up, Set It Up, and a game called Mafia. Other events that have been happening were Builders Club currently held three game hours with a large attendance of students. They are planning to host one more before the end of this school year. Our student council held a blicket event. Students participated in trivia and had a good time spending time with one another. Also, we just finished our handball tournament, where all the houses were in a head-to-head tournament versing each other, and the winning team received house points for their house. The House of Endurance won. House events have had a high amount of participation, the games have been really fun. The bridge, the bridge put together... The Bridge, the Bridge put together an SEL group with our English language learner classes this school year. These groups were held in Spanish and English. The last group was held on April 22nd, 2022. The students focused on emotional regulation skills and executive fun, executive functioning skills. On Wednesday, April 27th, our advisory lesson was on autism awareness and kindness. In addition, the Builders Club sold autism awareness shirts to promote awareness. All staff and students wore their autism awareness shirts or blue to show their support on Wednesday, April 27th. In addition, Mrs. Cook's class just finished reading the book Flipped. In this book, they are learning about different characters' perspectives in a story. One of the main characters completes a science project of hatching eggs and faces conflict with the other main characters around it. Mrs. Cook's class, with the help of Mr. Weiss, was, has borrowed an incubator and 11 eggs to watch and explore the process of growing and hatching baby chicks. The class enjoys explaining the processes, keeping a daily log, creating a survey to predict the number of eggs that will hatch, and choices of names for the chicks. Finally, we are very proud of the progress the House Leaders and our houses have made this year. We hope to continue as we reach the end of the school year. Thank you, Dr. Conklin and the entire board for following, for allowing us to speak.
Thank you. I thought he'd make a leave, he just runs out.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Did I get to the next slide?
He left.
Jacob? Did the chicks hatch?
Not yet.
Ah, how soon?
21 days. Yeah, they started last week, yeah.
Good.
We'll get an update next, next month.
Next, okay, next month. Thank you.
I wanted to recognize this week is Teacher Appreciation Week from May 1st to May 7th. It's funny, they always say May 2nd to May 6th, and like, school starts on Sunday and ends on Saturday.
That's right.
It's not fair. Please take a few minutes out of each day to reflect on all your incredible efforts to teach and support students in these challenging times. Teachers are the, are the people in many children's lives who they look to for support, guidance, and words of encouragement. An icon in children's TV, Mr. Rogers, and someone I call often, as the teachers could probably tell you, said, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers, you always find people who are helping.' To me, teachers and all the staff in the schools are those helpers. So thank you for all that you do for the students and families of the Caldwell Public Schools."
Thank you.
And I hope that everyone takes a moment to thank their teacher in an email or a letter sometime this week.
I think we should all give our teachers a round of applause.
Aye. I also want to recognize that May 8th to May 14th is Special Education Week in New Jersey. And since 1985, New Jersey has proclaimed the second week in May each year is Special Education Week. This year's theme for special education is "Education, the Key to Success." Over 235,000 children receive special education instruction throughout New Jersey. More than 18,000 are enrolled in preschool and early intervention programs. Thousands of parents, teachers, child studies team members, and school administrators give generously of their time and energy to support the learning needs of special education students. The public school districts of New Jersey make a major contribution to the public welfare by preparing tens of thousands of exceptional persons to participate as citizens of this state and as members of society. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to recognize the students who have worked so hard and accomplished so much, and thank their parents and educators who have provided support to these children and continue to look for ways to improve our schools, to promote the achievement of all of our students. Thank you.
Okay, the president's report, all I have to say is tonight, there are no committee reports. We will go ahead with just the approval of the minutes. So Brian, should we make a motion to approve the minutes? Should I make a motion?
So the only thing I think we're going to approve is the.
It's just the finance number 17. Okay, so Brian, should we do the public comments on agenda first and then go to the approval of finance?
I think so, yes.
Let's do that, okay. So right now, we're going to do public comments on agenda items only, okay? Public participation shall be governed by the following. The participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items on the agenda. The participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. So at this time only, does anyone have any questions or comments on agenda items only?
Good evening, my name is Teri DiMartini-Greenly, I reside at 35 Woodrow Place. I am here tonight to talk about the resignation of the Washington School Principal, which is listed on the agenda. My oldest started at Washington School in 2015. When Barbara Adams left in 2017, we then had an interim principal for six months, followed by two other principals in the last three years. My middle child is currently in 4th grade, and he will have had five principals in six years of elementary school. My youngest is in kindergarten. We almost sent him to private school this year due to the pandemic. We did not because of Maureen Mazzano, Amy Azari, and Jenny Anderson. While the school year felt unknown, what we did know was that there was no better kindergarten teachers for him than these three educators. The teachers are truly the heart of our school and of our children's education. I worry the most about what these frequent changes in our leadership mean for our children and if it will then, or for our teachers, I'm sorry, and if it will then make some of them decide to leave our school as well. Washington is the largest school in our district. Every grade level, with the exception of 2nd grade, has three classes. 2nd grade has four. Most of the other schools have two classes per grade level and smaller classroom sizes. We need to look into the makeup of our school and see what supports need to be put in place for a principal to be successful here. Maybe the one-size-fits-all model does not work. Maybe something to consider is that Washington may need a vice principal. As we look for a new principal, the search needs to include the larger parent community. People need an opportunity to speak and be heard, whether it is through town halls, small groups, or private sessions. But beyond the parents, the teachers need to be heard. Parents have not been inside this building for two years due to the pandemic. The teachers and school staff are the people who know what the climate and culture have been and what this school needs. Many of our teachers are not tenured. I ask that we give all teachers a safe space to speak freely without consequence. Ask them for their insight, what they want, and what they think our children need. The community needs to come together and fix what is broken here, and everyone deserves a chance to speak and a seat at this table. I was really disappointed last week as a parent that I found out about this through a text message hours before any sort of communication was sent out from the school district. While that situation was beyond our control, it really would have been nice to have seen administrator on the blacktop at any time to ease parents' worries, listen to concerns. I sent an email on Thursday asking about this and received a response today. I was told that a Google search would reveal that the turnover in the field of education is not unique to Caldwell West Caldwell, but retention and turnover in all positions is a national crisis. And the blacktop is not a forum for discussion or extensive dialogue. So I ask you all this tonight. When and where will we have a forum for dialogue and extensive discussions? Many other districts offer regular coffee hours or town hall forums with their administrators. Do we not see it as a problem in West Caldwell that we have lost two principals in one year, and both of these women started at the same time? Are we going to be passive and say that this is a national crisis? Or are we going to look at ourselves and say, how do we fix what is going wrong here? We've asked our teachers to learn new curriculums to keep up with changes in education. I ask that our administration please take a look at how we are hiring, how we are retaining people, and what we can do to make the Caldwell West Caldwell District a place where people don't want to leave. A few weeks ago, a teacher mentioned that she does not refer people to our district to work anymore. This is a problem, and we need to be proactive at fixing this. Our children, our community, our teachers, all of us deserve this. And I really thank you all for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Teri. Thank you, Teri, thank you very much. Anyone else? Anything on the agenda? This is just agenda items only. Anything off the agenda, you'll have a chance at the end. Anything else on the agenda only? Then we're going to move forward with our approval of finance. So if we can move to the finance committee report, follow.
We will do that. So under finance and facilities this evening, I make a motion to approve item number 17 on this evening's agenda under finance.
I will second it.
Brian, will you take the role, please?
Yes, Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Getty.
Yes.
Ms. Grasso.
Yes.
3-0, motion carried.
Okay, so now we'll move to public comments on items or issues outside of the agenda. Again, public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that same topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Does anyone want to come up and address anything that's outside of the agenda this evening?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Susie Cedarbaum, I'm at 30 Stony Brook Road. I'm going to ask you to be patient because I don't really like public speaking. And I just put this together today because I, the issue came up today. So we've been in the district for about five years, and I'm extremely happy with the instruction. I really consider myself very lucky and my kids. I have three daughters. Today, the gap assessment in Washington School was given, and the teachers and parents were not notified that they were going to be given, administered on the computer. I, I had emailed Jenny Frank and Alina Jacobs, but I didn't want to wait a month to bring up my concern. So they haven't, I haven't talked to them yet. I wanted to know why we weren't given, you know, notification. I know that's not something that is mandatory, but it would just would have been nice. My, my daughter's in 2nd grade. She's never been given a test on the computer. She was in kindergarten when the pandemic started, and she was never on a computer. I don't, like, I, I limit screen time, and I'm sure other, other parents do too. I work on the computer all day. I don't need her on the computer, so, at this age at least. So she developed a lot of anxieties around a computer. So you put her in front of a computer, she starts to cry. It's unfortunate. So already, the test, you know, they have, sometimes kids have a little anxiety, all of us do, when, when you're taking a test. But once you put them in front of the computer and they really don't know how to use it well, that becomes a bigger issue, so they can't think clearly. So why, I want to know, I know you can't always answer the questions, but why aren't we giving our kids basic instruction if they're expected to take a test on the computer? I know that it's easier for the staff to grade, and I know you per, you probably purchased this, this test, and that's how they, how it's administered. But again, her teacher wasn't even told this to even prepare the kids for it. So this is not really, I know this is a weird thing, but they were given test, they were tested and it was timed, and she said she didn't have enough time. I know that that's how standardized tests work, but I just wanted to let you know. Unfortunately, she doesn't want to take the test tomorrow. She's going to, but I guess it's a two-part test. She wasn't, today was the math. She wasn't given paper or a pen. And I know, again, that's probably how the test is given, this specific test. However, we're being, we're, we're telling our students that they have to write, they're, they're being taught that they have to write out their problems. So that's how they think, right? So if you're teaching them that, I feel like the particular test that we're choosing should offer them the same, you know, it should be similar. I know if you're a gifted student, maybe you should be able to do this stuff in your head, and some might be able to, but at the same time, you're telling them not to.
What else?
You know, I just wanted to put your, I want you to put yourself in their position. Say you were giving, you're, you're, you know how to use a computer, but maybe you don't know how to use Excel. So if someone, if someone was to tell you, "Please put a formula in Excel," you really wouldn't know, that's not common sense. So I just think that it should have been told, I would have prepared her. I know that I'm not the only parent with children that had anxiety around the test and were upset today. Thank you for listening and thank you for everything you do, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Susie. And Dr. Conklin, do you want to respond? I know you're still jotting.
So, yeah. What I would really suggest is that you reach out to Ms. Jacob, Ms. Hawkeswell. I don't want to say specifically how it was administered, why it was, I, I don't want to say something that I'll be incorrect about and give you bad information. So if you could reach out to them, if they don't get back to you and give you appropriate responses, then email me and I'll, and I'll get in touch with you.
Right.
But they're the best ones that could say how it was administered, why it was administered that way. There might be a rationale, and I'll say something, and then you'll talk to them, and I'll be totally incorrect. So I don't want to do that and confuse you or confuse myself.
Right.
So if you could reach out to them, I'm going to reach out to them tomorrow morning as well to see what happened and why it wasn't communicated, whether it was miscommunication on anyone's part or it wasn't something that they communicated. I'm not sure of any of those things right now.
Yeah, and I, and I do plan on doing that, and I did, I told you I did speak with, it was just the timing of it wasn't great. I didn't want to wait a month. But I will do that, and I just wanted to let you know that I just didn't think it was fair that that was their first test being given. And it was an important test, but these kids, like, they, I'm not, I don't push my daughter doing this. This is all her, like, I'm like, this is totally your choice, not that kind of mom, but she really wants to do it, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else want to come up this evening? No? Okay. All right, then I will make, I can't do that yet. Still learning, everybody's with me. Two and one tonight, thank you, Dan. Okay, so we have no other questions or comments this evening. Where the board will go back into executive session is now 7:53 PM. Executive session, the purpose of that meeting will be to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. This meeting has been advertised and isn't complying with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Before we end, I just want to say on another note, I'm always such a big fan of the middle school, and when I did speak. Go ahead.
The movie? Oh, you, oh, then my, go ahead.
Okay, then I'll, um, that, it was, actually, I was in a class, and it was Dana Spina's class, asked me the question, like, why is it called the Sunshine Law? And I looked it up, because I'm like, we read it so much, and I'm like, why? Paula would probably know this because she's in a grade, but it's that it's meant to shed light on, on matters, right? So that they're open to the public, which I thought was very interesting. And then I did email her after I looked it up, but I think I've said it 17 times tonight. I'm like, I'm going to just share this all in public. What did I forget?
Uh, the, we had the music, I mean, music, no, I'm off topic too. The movie festival, the young lady won.
Were you talking about that?
The movie festivals, well, next, please attend next week's board meeting or watch it on YouTube. We have a bunch of celebrations next week. One of the major celebrations is that we, it's two years in a row now, we've won the film festival. A young lady won the film festival. I'm not going to give her name because I'm going to make sure everyone watches next week when she attends the board meeting to get congratulated for her victory, so.
That's great, that's great. That's the Count Basie film as well, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, so after all that, let's end the meeting. Can someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting and adjourn to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I'll second.
Brian, will you take the role, please?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, motion carried.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. Have a good evening.